Maybe recycling and collection point can be set up somewhere in Irvington to make it easier for residents to join this worthwhile effort. It would be fantastic for our village to join the forward-thinking parts from Manhattan and Brooklyn in this noble endeavor. Please keep me posted on how this is progressing. Thank you, Vera. I think this is one that we're constantly looking at. We're hoping to find a local solution in partnership with the town of Greenberg, but, you know, we're still looking at options there. Next is from Ann Jaffe Holmes. Your mayor and board trustees, tomorrow's final public hearing on sustainable materials management, Inc.'s food scrap composting facility proposed to be opened in Cora del Mar will change the economies of waste in Westchester profoundly. SMM will be taking what is currently wasted at great cost to taxpayers and upscale the material into valuable products for market. You can be very happy knowing that our village community has shown great interest in participating in this paradigm shift, just as the public have been demonstrating their ability and willingness to properly separate recyclables in Memorial Park and after the Fourth of July celebration. Your continued careful thinking about how our village can navigate eventual necessary infrastructure and operation changes is critical in bringing this all to a cleaner, more environmentally and economically sustainable future. Much appreciation, Ann Jaffe Holmes, Green Policy Task Force and Junior Green Policy Trustees. The next one is from Chuck Kerr. It's rather long, so I'm just going to start with the beginning and the end. Dear Brian, I wanted to alert you about a new initiative that the Greater Irvington Land Trust is leading within the Irvington community, the Pollinator Pathway Project, which I believe will be a wonderful way to connect a wide range of residents and groups within our village in a fun and positive way. As part of our efforts to preserve and promote open space in Irvington, GILT has become actively involved with the Hassan Tavistah Tonic, a regional conservation partnership that works across Southern New York and Southwestern Connecticut to advance land protection in Irvington. We believe that creating a pollinator pathway program in Irvington is a tremendous opportunity to engage a wide range of residents and community groups in support of a number of initiatives already working on our communities such as efforts by GILT and the Open Space Advisory Committee to preserve open space, the beautification committee's planting program on Main Street, the gardens and learning opportunities in the Howard Nature Center, the new reading garden at the Irvington Library, the Africa City Green Policy Task Force, development in historic district along Main Street, promotion of parks, et cetera. The type of project that will be successful is supported by a wide range of organizations and folks within the village. To that end, we already discussed this with a number of groups who are excited about creating a pollinator pathway initiative within Irvington. We have a wide range of other groups and local businesses planning to be contacted. They've listed a whole bunch of groups that are already onboard. Our goal is to develop this pollinator pathway program over the coming months with a formal launch next spring. Very much appreciated the opportunity to meet with you and the trustees, discuss this initiative and how we've more broadly engaged the village in promoting what I sincerely believe will be a fun and exciting project for the community. I look forward to hearing from you. I think our rekeeping initiative also is supportive of this idea, so we'll be adding not just --
It should be buried?
Not just a pathway, but maybe some bees as well. So I think we'd be happy to have Chuck come in and tell us about it. Now we're up to public comments, which no one has any this time. There'll be another opportunity and a public hearing, two public hearings. Consent agenda, anyone have any questions or comments on this? Other than there's a lot of people that make our summer camp programs work. I think we triple our amount of staff from people who live by the village.
Creeply from Robert, the budget modifications weren't circulated, really. I don't see any math in that. I have one question. Just that they didn't get out to the drive.
It may not have been in the draft, but it may have been in the final on Friday.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't see it.
You got another read?
Yeah, there was.
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda if I get a second. All in favor? Next, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing to consider a local law regarding home occupations. If I have a second, all in favor?
I should just point out that the board has a slightly revised version of the local law compared to the one that was published on Friday, and also that copy is available in the back. But it just, and we'll go through and explain.
I assume you want me to go through this plan?
Yes, please.
You're not asking me to do it in 30 seconds?
No, 30 seconds.
Because it'll take a little bit longer.
Take a full minute.
Full minute, okay, good. I guess the first thing to explain is where this law came from. It's in response to one of the recommendations in the comprehensive plan update. The recommendation in the comprehensive plan update was to modernize the zoning code provisions on home occupations in residential districts, and I'll read the reasoning. The comprehensive plan committee recognized that advances in technology, decentralization of the workplace, and changes in home-based businesses and home occupations have rendered traditional regulations of home occupations, including those in the Irvington zoning code, over-restrictive in some ways and under-restrictive in others. The zoning code should be amended to accommodate the demand for growth in home-based businesses while protecting community character and health safety and welfare of neighbors in residential zoning districts. And I think this law does that. So I'll go through it in some detail because it's quite different from the law that's currently on the books. First is to define home occupation, which is now defined much more broadly than it is in the current definition is pretty much architect, artist, accountant, dentist, engineer, lawyer, musician, physician, surgeon. I'm sure there's a lot, home occupation surgeons, therapist, teacher, similar persons. And with kind of without regard to, you know, how many patients they see or anything like that. This one just defines it as any business, professional, artistic, or educational activity conducted within a dwelling unit by the residents thereof. So it's not limited to just the professions that were in the code. Then it makes it, and this is a fairly big change from the current code, in the one-family districts, and this is the first part of this, not the other districts later. If a home occupation doesn't have customers or clients or other persons who visit it for business purposes, other than occasionally, anybody might have some vacation, if they don't have, you know, customers, clients, or other persons, then they can just have the use without having to register at the village clerk. Right now, the current code does require registration with the current occupation. This one doesn't. You can just have it in your home provided, and there are some requirements, some of which are new, that the occupation has to be carried on by a resident of the premises under the current law, that the home occupation is clearly incidental and subordinate to the residential use of the premises that's under the current law. Not more than the equivalent of one non-resident full-time employee, associate, or assistant is permitted. So if you've got two-part talk, two half-time, that's okay, but the equivalent of one non-resident full-time. The home occupation can't be carried on in an area outside of the dwelling unit and then the accessory building. There's no display of goods, supplies, or advertising visible from any street with the exception of one sign, which I'll get to later, and there's no outdoor storage of goods or supplies. And the sign that's allowed is a one-square-foot sign, which is this, also in the current law. This is a new provision that delivery or pickup of parcels is not significantly different from what would be expected for a resident without such home occupation. Everybody recognizes, everybody has a lot of deliveries now, but not more than just the ordinary person who gets tons of deliveries every day. There can't be any offensive noise, vibrations, smoke, dust odor, or other emission, no lighting or heat generated by the home occupation, noticeable to people on nearby premises, and there can't be any interference to electrical, television, or radio interference. The home occupation doesn't add significantly to the quantity of waste material than what would be expected for a regular home. Here's where the change is. Okay, it's a small change. Right now, it reads, "The home occupation shall not discharge into any sewer drains for the ground any material other than domestic sanitary sewage." And it can't discharge any material that's radioactive, poisonous, detrimental to normal sewer plant operations, corrosive to sewers, strong water pipes. That language, "other than domestic sanitary sewage," was inserted at the recommendation of what it claims to be, because I think it makes sense. So I put the language in. I don't think it changes it enough that we can have to reenlist it or anything. It's just a tiny change. I think they're clarifying. And then lastly, the home occupation can't in any manner change the residential character of the dwelling unit, which is the case now. Couple of the differences from the current law, the start, currently you need to register, now you don't need to register. There's no limitation on how much of the house can be used for the home occupation. Under the code now, you can only use 375 square feet. There isn't any limitation. It has to be inside the house or the accessory building, but it could be, you know, a big part of the house. There's no parking requirement now, and the current code has a limitation, and the reason there's no parking requirement for this, because you're not having customers or clients. You'll see when we get to the special permit one that there is a parking requirement. And then the current code has a limitation that whatever's used in it has to be customary household appliances and equipment, and that's not really relevant anymore. Okay, so that's part one. Part two, well, there's a lot of part two, but part two is a special, home occupation is allowed by special permit if the home occupation has employees, customers, clients, or other people that visit the premises for business purposes. It's still got many of the same requirements as the other one, virtually all the same requirements, except there's a couple of additional ones. One, if it's a music dance theater, a similar studio, it has to be equipped and used in such a manner that sounds from, aren't annoying to other persons or premises nearby or public places. And then this is a requirement for one that has the customer or clients, if they're at a park, we shall be available for the home occupation so that it will not result in insufficient parking for neighboring residents. The planning board shall determine whether off-street parking spaces are necessary, and if so, the number of spaces that must be provided, the location of the lot, the screening that must be provided. That also gives some flexibility, recognizing that different home occupations are going to involve different numbers of people at different times, and so it's left up to the planning board to determine how much parking is required. It also provides the planning board could put conditions on the special permit, like the time of day and the days of the week that the people can visit premises and the frequency of the visit. Doesn't have to put these on, but for a particular user in a particular area, it might deem that important. And it could put a limit on the number of employees or other people that could be employed, and it can put a limit on the length of time for which the special permit is issued. If it's one they're a little unsure about, they might want to just give it for one year and see how it plays out. All right. Then Section 4 of the law allows home occupations the same way as a right if there's no customers by special permit, if they're in two-family residence districts. Right now, they're not allowed in two-family residence districts. They're allowed in one-family houses in two-family residence districts. We made that, but not in two-family residence districts. They're also not allowed in multifamily residences, and now there would be a lot of them in multifamily residences, and that's what Section 5 is about. And then the last change in there, oh, no, and then also, they're allowed in the business district in residential units, whether they are a single family, two-family, or multi-family.
Obviously, this came from the comprehensive plan, but I think it also kind of comes from common sense where, you know, so many people are working at home and no one knows, so the fact that we have a registration requirement doesn't really make sense right now anyway for, you know, the average, I mean, except if you're having people come to your house, then it's a completely different story, but if you're just working from your home, it kind of seems silly that you have to register, you know, and I think that that's.
Yeah, and it isn't so much, I suppose you could say the special, and the special permit is more burdensome than the registration, but there's no other way to have somebody review it except they have the planning board review it and issue a special permit or not. Yeah, the old law made sense at the time it was written, and that's the way the home occupation laws were in almost every municipality, it just doesn't make sense anymore.
Yeah, things have just changed so much. We've talked about this in 23, maybe more. I mean, they actually got this done pretty quickly, but we have talked about this with the board for a while.
Right, I'm sorry, can I just say one other thing?
Sure.
Mary sent this to the chairperson of the planning board, who sent it around to his members, and the concerns, the few of them, you know, had questions, and I believe that they're all addressed by the law. The only one that wasn't was clarifying the provision I mentioned about it can only be household waste that one of the planning board members sees and may have brought in a suggestion. So either they're not an issue or it was incorporated.
So, Mary Ann, the one that I wasn't sure about was the discussion, the question about cowork sites like WeWork, obviously.
It's not a home occupation, it's not carried on by the resident or, you know, the resident and other. And it involves a lot of people coming from here.
Right, which might be, I mean, they could still argue that it would fall under the special permit.
Seemingly a special permit.
Right, if anything.
Seemably it's a special permit. It doesn't sound like a home occupation, but it depends, I guess, how it's structured. But it couldn't be as a right, it would have to be by special permit.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else on board?
No, I'm happy to hear from the public. We have discussed this in a plan, I mean, we discussed it as part of the comprehensive plan, and we discussed it again, developing this law among ourselves in some work sessions. So, you know, we may be missing something, that's why we have public hearings.
Do you transition? Anyone from the public like to speak, please?
I know that public hearings are generally for comment. Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
And based on the answer to that question, I may or may not have a comment, or it might affect what my comment would be.
Absolutely.
So what is a special permitting process?
What's a special permit?
You're saying Section 3 requires some special permitting. I don't know what that means.
A special permit means you would have to make an application to the planning board for a special permit, and, you know, pretty much, I'm not sure they have special forms for a special permit, where you put in a letter explaining what you're going to do, and then the planning board would have a public hearing on it, and it would go through the planning board process. They don't do a lot of special permits. I think they did maybe one for an accessory apartment, and, you know, it all went pretty quickly. They came on one night, but I suppose you could come one night, and if a lot of neighbors come and they, you know, express concern, then maybe, you know, the planning board would have to look into things, so you can't say it would be one night.
Have your name?
Elaine, A-L-A-Y-N-E, last name K-A-T-Z. Many people say, "Don't ask, don't tell." I don't believe in that. With all fairness and frankness, I have operated a solo practice in my home for 24 years in this village. I really truly believe I got a, I registered sometime in the late 90s. I don't know if there's a requirement to annually re-register.
I think that was it.
That's good.
But I haven't. Again, I admit that. And I continue, and I have an employee which certainly falls under Section 2, but I am an attorney, and I have what I would consider an occasional client. But I look at this law, and I don't know what you mean by that. I don't know, you know, if occasional means once a day, once a week, once a month. I certainly, you know, and I don't know, you know, I'm not looking for a special, you know, dispensation here, nor do I want to fall a field of your new law, which I actually, I think is great. I think your efforts are great. I think it's a terrific law, I assure you. And again, I know this is not a special, this is a hearing and not a special permit. In my personal situation, I have only off-street parking. Nobody ever parks other than in my driveway or in my garage, but I don't know what you intended, and I don't want to fall a field of this law.
I mean, I think that some of these were intentionally left a little vague, and I think what it's trying to prevent is, you know, the home hairdresser that has, you know, 12 clients a day. My guess is if it's been 24 years and you can operate this way, and I've never gotten an email about, you know, crazy cats in your neighborhood, you know, it's probably, it's probably as occasional. I think you purposely left it somewhat vague.
Yeah, but, I mean, but Brian, I think occasional, the opposite isn't a hairdresser. Occasional means you generally don't have clients, means business that doesn't have clients, and you can't define it, you know? I mean, what are you going to say, once a day, once a week, you know? I would say once a day is not occasional, you know? But, you know, it's one of those, you know, when you see, and the thing is, I can't say more than that. I mean, and I don't think the board wants to define it.
I don't think we want to. We did try talking about it.
Because what are you going to do, just pick once a week? I mean, once a month?
That's way too narrow.
Yes, because it might also be, you might have two this week and the next, you know?
Yeah, I mean.
You know the response to every question like this? It depends.
Right.
I mean, yeah, I could see models of businesses where, frankly, having one person come a day may be the upward bounds. This is, I mean, that's opposed to someone who has, you know, I don't know what, a massage parlor or something else. I don't mean to pick out that, or a medical practice, okay, to keep it more generic, who would be scheduling people every hour or every 45 minutes or something? So that means.
This makes it the same point, Brian, and I don't want to mislead people to think, you know, just because you don't have people coming every hour, it's occasional. I don't think that was the intent.
Well, then we've got to change the language, because certainly.
Oh, no, it was changed, well, you can't, because remember, we originally had who regularly see, and then decided.
You can't tell us we can't change the language if it doesn't fit.
No, you can change it, no, I'm just saying it would be hard. If you want to come up with a timeline, that we can, you know, once a month, we can say once a month.
No, once a month is way too, I mean, once a day seems appropriate. I mean, this once a month is impossible to run a business that way. You couldn't run a graphics studio that way. You couldn't run many, where you have to have clients when you start a new project. Sometimes they have to come and work with you in person. So once a month is absurd. It doesn't work.
I'm not saying, I mean, I'm just.
So here's my question, if, I mean, I'm glad you asked the question about what happens when you get a, when you request a special permit. We kind of assume that people understand the planning board process, but as Mary Ann explained it, it sounds to me like it's not a very onerous process to write an explanation of what you want to do, get on the agenda of the planning board, go and present your, this is what it is, it's once a day, or it's maybe sometimes two people a day, sometimes a week, there's nobody, explain that to the planning board. And so I guess I'm saying, when in doubt, you'd probably request a special permit. They might have said, you didn't need to come for a special permit.
The problem is whether special permits partake of the normal notification process of the planning board, because it's a special permit.
They do.
If they do, then you're talking right there of, at a minimum, several hundred dollars in front, upfront costs, and other kinds of legal requirements. So it's not lightweight, one step to the next is, it may be more lightweight than a full site plan, but if they're looking for parking, they're going to ask you for a survey.
Well, okay, so I take your point, but it's not as though it's something that requires that you have a lawyer next to you, does it? And don't we have.
No, but you might need an architect to draw up a plan.
Or maybe the first time through is they don't require that, and they say, oh, here's your driveway. Every week or so, you have these number of people, and yes, you've been doing this for 25 years, and the logic seems to be that, yes, you have to notify, but we don't have to notify by certified anymore, it's the.
You do need to.
It's certified, okay.
It doesn't have to be certified, but it has to be by something that gives proof of delivery.
Proof of delivery.
Unfortunately, the post office eliminated the 35 cent proof of delivery.
I think it's absurd that someone who's got someone coming once a day maximum now has to go do a special permit. That is, that's absurd for a resident.
Well, I don't think that's what we're saying.
I don't think that was intended at all. I think we never intended this to completely overrule common sense. And when we.
Well, this discussion seems to have.
Words that allow different interpretations, like frequency or whatever, there's obviously a little play in the joints there supposed to be. So if in 24 years, nobody living anywhere near you has raised the slightest concern, you know, about this raucous activity you engage in, you know, it's, but it's your decision whether you think which of these, you know, we're not asking you, it would not be appropriate for you to say, on Monday of last week, I had two people, on Wednesday, I had one, on Friday. I actually calculated it. And they all parked my driveway except once, there was somebody on the street. You know, some of this has to be sort of like an honest assessment of which of these categories do you think you fall in, and given the length of time you've been doing it, what makes sense.
Yeah, I think you've been doing a good job so far.
Yeah, so far, see, so far, nobody, our phones have not been ringing all the time.
And again, I think part of this idea is to protect our neighborhoods, if you've been existing in a neighborhood.
That is a big thing.
And has not had complaints. I mean, that's why we've left it vague purposely, that if you're in an area where your neighbors are not complaining, there's no off-street parking, no on-street parking that's taking spots away from people, there's no noise complaints, I think you can use your own common sense as to what you would do in that situation. I don't think there needs to be a number of, we want to see a number of people you see, because we purposely left it vague.
Right, right. I appreciate all of your responsiveness. As I said, I don't want to, I think there should be some flexibility in your law, and I think the use of occasional seems to have, does give flexibility. I would be concerned if there was a thought by this board that, in specific, and I would agree with Mr. Gill.
Gill.
Gilliland?
Gilliland.
Gilliland. That anything less than one or two employ, excuse me, clients and/or customers a day does not seem more than occasional to me, but I think that that might be one day something that this board will have, will address in the implementation of this law. And I thank you for your time. And as always, you know, we try to establish common sense guidelines, knowing that it's not going to drill down and define for every single situation, you know? How long is your driveway? How much screening do you have on the street? We don't, the law is not going to, it's not going to give you a checklist for all those things. But again, it's the application of, this is the principle we're trying to be, you know, that to try to encourage home occupations while respecting the neighbors. The common good.
We think the occasional would be fine if the neighbors are complaining. You know, that's a lot of the way I look at it too, you know? Occasional for my neighbors might be different than your neighbors.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And you get the good citizenship of work for asking.
Hi, my name's Golden Fury. I live on Bracebridge Lane on the Aqueduct. So about what we were just talking about, I really do support what you just said about leaving it flexible. First of all, you're just starting this new plan, see how it plays out. There no doubt will be changes down the road. It's difficult to do a kind of one-size-fits-all thing for every kind of business and every kind of home on every kind of street. Who knows? And you don't want to itemize every kind of condition. Yeah, so I think it's really wonderful, really good approach. So speaking of being very thankful of what you're doing, I'm an artist, and this rule you're making, these changes you're making, really will be helpful to artists who are thinking of coming to live here or already are here, like myself. This has a, assuming you all vote for it, will have a big impact on a current proposal we have in front of the zoning board. The idea of limiting, you know, all artists need to operate within 325 square feet is insane. Some artists need two square feet, others need 30,000 square feet. So, you know, it's, other issues come up, like FAR and Thorp and coverage and things like that, of course, but anyway, so I just, I really appreciate it. And by the way, the studios are in very short supply in the River towns. They're very, very hard to get, and places like 145 Palisade are really getting more and more geared to businesses that can pay a lot more than artists can. I myself was evicted from there because they wanted to renovate the whole section of the building, and I've been looking for a place for two years. And I could go and buy for eight to 10,000 square. for two years. And I could go and buy for eight, eight to ten thousand square foot industrial loft, but I'm looking at a, I would need a million or so to even just get started without it. It's more space than I need, and small freestanding buildings are snapped up by construction companies and landscapers, so they might be cheaper, but they don't exist. So, anyway, I have a letter, if it's appropriate--
Sure.
--which basically says much more truthfully, kind of what I just said. I like the passion. Thank you very much.
Interestingly, his application was, Mr. Fury's application was before the planning board last week, and part of it, he told them he was before the zoning board for a use variance. There was a little, looked a little bit of a dupe in that, and I put him up--
Every week?
To, to achieve the use variance anymore, right? Because the only reason, if I remember right, this was the only reason, yeah, yeah. So, simple things before the planning board agreement, what?
Yes.
That part of it anyway.
Yeah, the rest of it. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. If I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas adoption of the local law amending the zoning code with respect to home occupations is a listed action under the Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and the board of trustees has determined that such adoption will have no negative environmental impacts. Now therefore be it resolved in a declaration of SECRs issued. It resolves adopt the local law amending the zoning code with respect to home occupations. I'll make a motion if I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Interestingly, when the, when the law--
That's so rarely happens. That's wonderful.
People came to speak on behalf of the law. I was under a supply--
In case you didn't hear--
Hi, hi me.
Yeah.
What does Mulholland think?
When the law was adopted in nineteen ninety-four, the public hearing was held at the rec center, because there wasn't enough room here in, in this--
Is he upset about it?
Yep. Very controversial.
But were they not allowed? Was that law permitting them for the first time?
Correct.
Yes, they were worried that--
Yes, they were. That was three hundred and twenty-five square feet.
Right. So, the registration process was actually to, to track the phenomena, and to be honest with you, there were so little issues with it that the registration process was almost unknown by most people over the years, you know. So, I mean, you knew it. You were one of the few, probably.
That's when I moved in, nineteen eighty-four.
Right, right. So, anyway.
Actually, you sort of--
There you go.
Next, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing, consider a local law regarding snow and ice removal. If I get a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
This is, this one's going to be popular.
Well, I mean, I think this is the final piece of the law that was passed. How many years ago, Larry? Five, six?
Ooh, yeah, about that, yeah.
Five or six years ago. What we found was, you know, voluntary compliance wasn't as, as robust as we might have liked. So, I think we, we realized probably two years ago that we needed to add more teeth to it. Then we kind of remembered, kind of mid-winter again, and I should put a reminder on my calendar to bring it up in June, so we can do it before the snow flies, because you figure with our strange weather now, we're not going to get snow in July or August, so we'll be prepared. But, really, I mean, again, Mary Ann, you gave us the thirty-second version, but it's kind of giving some teeth to the violations, if you know, clear snow.
Yeah, this one I can do in thirty seconds. And, and that, it imposes a, a fine for somebody who violates, who doesn't remove their snow. It'd be two hundred and fifty for the first offense, five hundred for the second, if that's within twelve months, and a thousand for the third. And then, in addition, at the village's option, the village can come and clean it up and charge you back. That's already in the law. The new part is the fine.
Which I think this will help motivate people. I really do.
And it's really a safety issue.
Absolutely, and that's what--
This absolutely comes down to icy streets.
Yep, yep. And we realize it's been a change now for five or six years, but we literally were the seven. We were the only, we were the only municipality other than Village of Bedford, actually.
Garsdale Business District, or outside the Business District, I think, was the only--
Village, so, you know, we were definitely an outlier. If every other village in town and city could figure it out, we thought that our residents could as well. Now we have the stick as well as the carrot, so. Anybody else have any comments on this one?
Well, I'm interested in hearing any public comment, as, as always. And I know that, and I, I think that the safety issue that Janice rightly brings up is an important one, and also, I think it, it was, Mary Ann explained it, and I think you said it again, that it wasn't as though there was no penalty in the past. There, there was, and that was that the DPW would do it and charge you, right? So, it's not as though this, it's just that that all didn't pan out too smoothly. So, this is a penalty that's really a more straightforward, if this happens, this happens. Now, certainly there are people who would rather the village had done all this all along, and I'm sure that those people, you know, are, you know, they're still concerned about safety. But I support this because, you know, it's the more logical thing to do.
Yeah, I think the problem is too, is that that takes twenty-four hours. So, you could have--
Yes, you still have time.
--and it's a whole day later, it's like--
But the, the idea of walking, anybody who's tried to walk down Main Street and in a, in a bad situation, realize when you say safety, it's like, I'm so surprised somebody, you know, not only didn't get hit by a car, but also didn't go totally slipping down the, the street. And I, and I know there are concerns about Broadway as well, but it's, it does seem like the kind of thing that individuals can figure out.
Public comment? Okay, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. If I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve to adopt the local law amending urban code with respect to snow and ice removal. I'll make a motion. If I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agree with the twenty eighteen capital budget?
Okay, so, you know, we've, we've talked about this now at the last two work sessions that we had, but this capital budget, you know, represents a multi-year look ahead for what we see as capital expenditures in, throughout the village departments. Each of our departments assemble what they believe their needs are, and, you know, we, we work together to, to put, to put it in some sort of a cohesive, financeable plan that doesn't bankrupt the village, but still gets worked on, necessary infrastructure and equipment. So, the, the plan that you see here, which is organized in this case by year, lays out for each of the departments, the needs. You know, you can, you can see clearly that much of the money is devoted to infrastructure. It's in our public works department with important flood control projects and other things, and sidewalks, as you see, and equipment replacement. But there's a whole range of, of efforts being undertaken in each of the departments. The, the amount to be bonded for the first year of this capital budget is, is almost, almost two point four million, and, you know, future years are at similar levels in some cases. That's it. You have any specific questions? I'm happy to answer them.
No changes whatsoever.
No.
Great. So, I mean, again, we've talked about this and discussed it, and I think, you know, the one, last thing I'll, I'll point out again, and you kind of mentioned it, was we do try to plan it when, you know, a big chunk comes off, that we, you know, that's where we can, you know, kind of, you know, we try, we try to balance it so we don't have huge spikes and swoons in our, in our debt, and you try to retain it at the similar level, which is part of the planning process, which is why we have a multi-year plan.
Right. And the, in the final document that we produce for publication, which will be on the village website, it'll have all of the detailed bond indebtedness schedules and the future existing debt and the new debt that we're laying in, and that's, those are the tools that we use during our work sessions--
Exactly.
--to, to evaluate all that.
Resolve that the twenty eighteen capital budget dated July sixteenth, twenty eighteen is hereby adopted. I'll make a motion if I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I just want to make my common caveat is that we've got to be sure to make sure the department heads have the resources or whatever they need to be able to look at sustainability decisions in terms of budget expenses.
Next, we get to actually approve the bond resolutions to implement the capital budget. Do you have any, ready you want to say about this, or I can--
You can go ahead, Mrs.--
Larry gave me, Larry gave me a, a nice cheat sheet. So, usually we kind of, on the fly, throw them together, but Larry actually gave me a cheat sheet. He said, you stay seven years as mayor, he does it for you, so I just think--
This is, you have to earn your--
Yeah, exactly. First six years you're on your own. But, make a motion to approve bond resolutions dated July sixteenth, twenty eighteen, authorizing the issuance of varying amounts of serial bonds of the village of Irvington, County of Westchester, or State of New York pursuant to the local finance law, finance the cost of the following projects. Hundred forty-five thousand dollars with a five-year useful life for the acquisition of motor vehicles and the acquisition of police equipment. Eight hundred forty-five thousand dollars with a ten-year useful life for the reconstruction of a fireboat, the acquisition of police and highway communications equipment, the construction and reconstruction of sidewalk improvements, and the construction and reconstruction of various building improvements. Five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars with a fifteen-year useful life for the acquisition of machinery and apparatus for construction and maintenance, the construction and reconstruction of road improvements, and the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of park improvements. Four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars with a twenty-year useful life with construction and reconstruction improvements to the Hussin View Park Culver. Hundred fifty thousand dollars with a twenty-five-year useful life for the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of improvements to the village's firehouse. Two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars with a forty-year useful life for the construction and reconstruction of improvements to the village's water system. I'll also say that the useful life is kind of defined by the state. Some people want to know how we get the five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five and forties. There's, I think there's a list, actually, so it kind of defines, you know, what, what bucket you can put it in. So, just because something's five or ten years doesn't mean we only use it for five or ten years.
Correct.
You know, the example of, of fire trucks and, and--
Garbage trucks.
Garbage trucks are probably the best ones, where they probably have a book useful lives of probably fifteen or twenty years, maybe.
Yeah, exactly.
We have them for much longer than that. I guess, I'm guessing they're not twenty years, actually. It's probably ten or fifteen.
Yeah, and we usually keep them regularly twenty, yeah.
Right. That was my only caveat. Otherwise, I made a motion. If I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Authorization to approve credit change order number one for the Irvington Town Hall Theater project, twenty eighteen, ten.
Okay, so at the, at the last meeting, you approved a, a contract with Louis Scoppietti Inc. for work outside the town hall, to work on the Town Hall Theater Plaza, is what we refer to it as. And in doing so, the amount was considerably higher than what we had expected, although we had entered into negotiations with that, that low bidder to further reduce that. The resolution that you adopted in June actually authorized the issuance of the contract subject to successfully negotiating a change order down, which we did. And so this, so you're now approving that change order. So, there's a, there's a flow of all of this through the board. So, the initial contract was for two hundred and sixty-four thousand-ish. This number is a reduction of seventy-four thousand three hundred, without reducing it really significantly to scope. And, and the final number with the contractor is a hundred and ninety thousand. That's it.
Just got it right back to where we had budgeted.
That's where we had expected to end up, yeah. So, but I think we worked out all the details.
But it was sort of just a miscommunication in terms of, 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 looking for like the more results?
I think there was some uncertainties about some of the aspects of the, of the bid specifications, and frankly, they probably were rushed in preparing their bid and decided to just throw a number out there, and they ended up being the only bidder. So, we negotiated with them and sat down in great detail, went through some of the questions that they had in their mind, and answered them. So, you know, we had the luxury of being able to do that with one bidder, frankly. So, if it didn't work out, we would have put it back out to bid, and it would have delayed things, which is fine. I mean, you know, but it worked out better.
Okay. Resolve to approve credit change order number one, the contract twenty eighteen, ten, with Louis Scoppietti Inc. for the Irvington Town Hall Theater Plaza project, in the amount of seventy-four thousand three hundred dollars, and authorize the village administrator to execute that change order. So, I should mention that it was a reduction of seventy-four thousand three hundred, right?
Yeah, that's the credit, is what that is, yeah.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion if I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Taxary shares, two. I believe these are, these are budgeted, four.
They have provisions in the budget for that.
Yeah, yeah.
And falls within the budget.
Yep. Well, we're, we're at the beginning of the fiscal year, so hopefully it does. Can't take too much credit for that. But no, they're, these are, these are within what was expected. Our attorney provided, you know, an advice memo on this. The town of Greenberg, as you know, we don't have an assessment role, so the town of Greenberg does the negotiating, but the, they include the village attorney, not, I'm sorry, Mary Ann's partner, in on the, you know, the settlement discussions. So, and it's certainly significant ones, and this, I don't want to say it's insignificant, but it's not the largest one for these number of years, is, so, but our attorney was in on it and recommends it.
Okay. Whereas petitions have been filed by one oh six North Broadway LLC, petitioner challenging real property tax assessments on the town of Greenberg's assessment roles with respect to the subject property for the twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen tax years, property owner one oh six North Broadway LLC, property address one oh six North Broadway, years twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen. Whereas, petitioner's actions are now pending in Supreme Court, Rochester County, and whereas the town, the village, and the petitioner have reached a mutually agreeable resolution, now therefore be it, now therefore the village is authorized to effectuate a settlement commensurate with the following terms: twenty thirteen, reduction to twenty-eight thousand three hundred fifty dollars; twenty fourteen, reduction of thirty-three thousand one hundred dollars; twenty fifteen, reduction of forty thousand seven hundred fifty dollars; twenty sixteen, you'll see the new, the new assessments, a reduction of eight hundred seventy thousand one hundred dollars; and twenty seventeen, the same, eight hundred and seventy thousand one hundred dollars. The village share of the refund is forty-three thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-five cents.
Those are, those are--
Those are the assessment--
Those are assessment reductions, not tax reductions, that, that the mayor was reading that.
Yeah, so, it went from five point three million down to four point five million.
Yeah, that, those, that's the assessment, not, not the tax.
Yeah, it's not the amounts, yeah.
That's a big--
So, the reduction is the value. Hence, it's forty-three thousand and, whatever, that'd be a couple million.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion if I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And taxor share settlement, fifty-six Main Street, AKA Sunnyside Savings and Loan.
You can, you can just outline the terms if you want to.
Perfect.
This is exceptionally small, as you say, twenty-five dollars.
For the year twenty fifteen, the original assessment was ninety-three thousand eight hundred dollars, the revised assessment's eighty-five thousand two hundred dollars, and the share of the refund is two thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars and six cents.
And that's for the Sunnyside Federal Loan at fifty-six Main Street property.
Yes, I'll make a motion if I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Support for grant application in the New York State Council on the Arts.
Okay. Follow the bouncing ball, right? So, the, the, in conjunction with our theater commission and the friends of the Irvington Town Hall Theater, this board was presented with an idea about revising the entrance to the theater. It was then presented, and this goes back over a year now, was then also presented with the idea that the entrance may not be in fact on the, on the west side of the building, but on the east side instead. So, through a feasibility study, that was good timing.
Sorry.
Through a feasibility study, it's been examined to, to look at having the entrance to the theater come in from the east side of the building, which would be partially, potentially on school property, also discussed with the school. And as, as part of that project, and certainly the design work is not, you know, is not, is not finalized, there's a feasibility study with, with renderings, but the, we're at a stage now where we feel we can submit for a grant application. There's a New York State Consolidated Funding process ongoing right now that requires submissions on July twenty-seventh. The identified program is the New York State Council on the Arts, and they have a variety of different programs. We're looking at their Large Capital Project Fund Program, or the Arts and Cultural Facilities Improvement Program, whichever mnemonic you want to use. And we're looking to-- And we're looking to support the application by the nonprofit that's associated with our Town Hall Theater. We have Friends of the Irvington Town Hall Theater that's dedicated to supporting the, the theater and what goes on in the theater. And this, this program is only open to nonprofits. So we're asking the trustees to support that application. One thing that I will point out, they are asking for 550,000. The project, this phase of the project is estimated to be around 3.6 million. We're putting down in the application that the Friends of the Theater will, will look to raise a certain portion, about 1.8 million of it. The, the remainder at this point is being indicated that the village is, is putting up the balance, which is the 1.2 million that you see here in the resolution. That amount is still subject to further, further discussion and refining. But for purposes of the grant application, it, it provides a complete picture for the grant application. But that's, that's not a, you're not, that's not a done deal.
Unless, unless it's paused for that tonight.
You, there were no bonds issued for that tonight, so. So that's for further discussion, but just for the purposes of this resolution, just to...
Since the grant is considerably less, yes, 550,000, if we, if it turns out that, you know, we went back and we redesigned it, squeezed and tweaked, and we got to say the project down to 3 million dollars, to name it as tactically, I guess it doesn't really matter because you only have to really commit to match the amount of the grant. It has to be half of the total cost, but since it's not half, does it, you know what I mean?
Right.
Do we have some wiggle room there?
There is wiggle room, yes.
Okay.
What else do you think like if, you have, does the grant get reduced by some percentage of, like, what the overall project?
Or even if we get the whole 550, and then we, it turns out that, you know, you, you decide that Balsamwood is a really good, you know, that's, that'll cost, you know, 2 million dollars, you know, as long as it's not...
I think the only place where you'd have any sort of difficulty if you, is if you completely changed the program of the project, you know, if you, if you all of a sudden, you know, what you've submitted in your grant application, you came in and said...
It's very similar to that.
I'm sorry, we really just meant a fire escape, you know?
Right, right.
You know, that's, it completely changes the...
Right, but we could go back and tweak it some and, you know...
Right, tweak is fine. Changing the, the entire project is, is very different thing.
Right, that makes sense.
So, and I think this is, I'm just asking this in a different way. So if we get the grant, or some portion of the grant, we are not committing to this specific amount of money, no matter what?
There will be further discussions at this board level to see exactly how the money's going to lay out. That's as much as I'll, I'll say. But you're not committing to it in hard terms.
We're committing to supporting. We're committing to ponying up.
Yes. But I think there's, there's, there are a lot more discussions that need to happen with the nonprofit about their capability for fundraising and how that all gets allocated.
And Larry, the, the Friends of the Irvington Town Hall Theater are okay with these changes in this particular application?
Yes. Yeah, that was all communicated to them. They understand it. We had, I had conversations with the president of the organization on Friday in great detail, and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna give it a shot. We spent a lot of time working towards this. We want to, we want to give it a shot. Do I, you know, am I confident that we'll have funds awarded? You know, we're, we'll have our fingers crossed, but if it doesn't work, we'll go at it again next year, so.
Thank you.
With the Balsamwood.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Fiona as well for, for all her, she's our grant writer, and she's been really helpful in our plugging, working through this and, you know, and...
First of all, yeah, they've done, they've done great, and a lot of volunteers, as you know.
Yeah.
You know, it's one thing for us to work on it, we spend time on it, but we've got a group of volunteers who've spent enormous amount of time, along with Greg Allen, our paid manager, so.
Whereas the Friends of the Irvington Town Hall Theater is applying to the New York State Council on the Arts for a 550,000 grant from the Large Capital Project Fund under the 2018 Arts and Cultural Facility Improvement Program for a project called Irvington Town Hall Theater, Transforming Access to the Arts, which is a great title. And whereas cost estimates totaling 3,617,460 dollars have been prepared for the project, and whereas all project expenditures are required by the grant program to be expended with the Friends of the Irvington Town Hall Theater's accounts, and whereas the village will provide 1,258,730 dollars towards the funding of the project cost, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees supports the Irvington Town Hall Theater, Transforming Access to the Arts Project, and the application, the Friends of the Irvington Town Hall Theater, submitting to the New York State Council on the Arts for 550,000 grant for the project, and upon the words of such request commits to 1,258,730 dollars in order to implement the project. I'll make the motion if I get a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Presentation of volunteer firefighters. Then I know Matt Schaefer's been a firefighter for a really long time, so I thank you for your service. I didn't know Douglas Forster very well, but thank you for your service as well. Resolve to approve the following member presentations from the Irvington Fire Company, Matt Schaefer and Douglas Forster. Will you make a motion to accept it for grant? If I get a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Inter municipal agreement with the town of Greenberg for the joint maintenance of Herman's Road Sewer Force Main System.
John, what do you think? No, no, I, I'm happy to go through it unless you'd like to, it's, either way.
Either way.
So the, the residents along Herman's Road, there's, there's a total of four residents along Herman's Road, including the last one on the road, which is your client, John Otto is the last name for...
The last, the last of the village, so.
Right, right.
On the, on the bacon.
Right. There's a, there's interest in extending the sewer system on Mountain Road to Herman's Road. The sewer system belongs to the town of Greenberg. Greenberg has been approached and is amenable to extending the system, extending their sewer district to include these four homes at this point, or, you know, this area of Herman's Road. And in order for that to happen properly, two things need to happen on the town side. One of them is they need to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the village that spells out various maintenance requirements and other things that you see in this resolution. They, the, the town also needs to formally expand their sewer district to encompass these, the area where these properties are. So those are both in the works. Greenberg is considering this intermunicipal agreement that is now in front of you. They're, they're considering it, I believe, tomorrow, or whenever their meeting is this week. I think it's tomorrow. And so we're looking for your approval on this IMA. But again, the IMA spells out maintenance of the various sewer lines that are involved. So the lines that are physically under the village road, which is Herman's Road, will be maintained by the, by the village. The customers along Herman's Road that are in the village will be billed a sewer charge to help recoup the cost of any maintenance that the village may have. The customers, because they're feeding into the town's sewer system, will also be levied a tax as part of the sewer district tax, the town district. And all that is spelled out in the, in the resolution and I think the IMA. That's, that's pretty much the summary of it. So we're, we're, the sewer itself on Herman's Road and, and along Mountain Road will become part of, will be a public sewer. And none of the cost of the installation of that is being borne by the village. It'll be dedicated to the village and/or the town, depending on which section we're talking about. Right? Did I miss anything?
No, no, only that, I mean, it's not even that important, but if one of the four properties already did petition to be included in the sewer district and it was extended, so that, have we indicated, I mean, Greenberg is disposed to do it, I don't know if you want, you know, and, and the IMA is fine, pretty much I, I drafted it based on, you know, other IMAs. And, and the, the reason they asked me an IMA decides on spelling, spelling out who's responsible for what is the county requires it, when there's more than one municipality and not with a sewer.
And just a subtle thing at the end of this resolution, we do make it final, subject to the final approval of our village attorney, because the town is considering this tomorrow night. So it could change if, obviously if it's not material, we'll make those changes if we're, we're satisfied. If it's material, of course, we'll be coming back to you, but we don't expect that, but...
I guess John talked to the town attorney...
If you want me to just summarize what I spoke to Tim today, he basically just said what, the, I spoke with Tim Lewis this evening, and he said that he didn't foresee any significant changes. There was one item that was reviewed at length at the end of last week with a board member that was concerned about the taxation and how the money was going to work. So that they, they had been, that was clarified. He said he had a good meeting on that. So they expect to schedule the public hearing for the, for the expansion of the sewer district, which requires a public hearing, and they're scheduling that for August 8th, and they expect to pass it then.
And at the, at the moment, John is representing the building owner on that lot who's got a proposal, but it's on hold now because the planning board wanted to make sure that the, there was going to be a sewer there, because the whole plan could change, they didn't get a sewer, and they had to set it down. So it's on hold before the planning board, but once this is done, it'll, it'll be there. I mean, it's still before the planning board, but the planning board will... That's the house insurance, you move the climbing wall.
You know, they're gonna have sewers and everything.
Imagine that.
Well, I think for, in honor of the summer, I'm gonna just read the resolved paragraph.
Thank you.
Because I think they could actually install the sewer line by the time I was done reading it, so. Resolve to approve the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Greenberg for the joint maintenance of Herman's Road Sewer Force Main System. And authorize the village administrator to execute said agreement subject to the final approval of the village attorney. I'll make a motion if I get a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is one that we get a lot of people here for tonight. Issue of a peddler's permit for Bill's Good Humor.
Yeah.
So you're somehow related to this, do you, John? You seem to be on every agenda.
Thank you, guys.
I was saying, I was saying to the mayor prior to the meeting that we don't normally put peddler's permits in the main part of the agenda. They often end up in the consent agenda, but this is actually a new vendor.
Very popular.
Yeah, apparently. So, you know, we've done our due diligence in terms of looking into, into anything we can in terms of health permits. We've heard of no complaints about this particular vendor, but we'll keep an eye on things for sure, and, you know...
Have you seen the scooter?
I want, I want to be good, be good humor scooter.
No, no, I didn't, I didn't...
A meter maid scooter.
Yeah.
Is it gonna get out with Irvington?
Should come and demo it right in front of you.
Yeah, exactly. They can drive a scooter right in here.
Might sway your board a bit. So, so we'll keep an eye on things. Some, you know, we've, we've, every so often you get someone that doesn't play nice in the sandbox with these types of things, but we'll keep an eye on things and...
Sir Jimmy Sausser could run the scooter right off the road.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no, there's no basis for excluding an application because of too much competition. We simply...
That's your bringing the permit fees.
Yeah, exactly.
Resolve to approve the issuance of a peddler's permit to Bill's Good Humor to operate an ice cream truck throughout the village for a term of one year, from the date of issuance for a permit fee of 100 dollars pursuant to Chapter 155 of the village code. Make a motion if I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of filming permit for Universal Television LLC.
Pretty, pretty straightforward. It looks like it's a, some sort of a pre-production pilot for, for Netflix. Universal, Universal Television is the, is the applicant. The property in question is Villanewitz, 55 Hudson Road West. But as, as laid out here, we don't see any issues. They did originally ask for 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We did leave that in the resolution. Certainly during the summer hours, that's not particularly late, because the end of, the permit time is normally 7:00 PM, but figured 8:00 PM's not that, not that big of a deal. And as it turns out, at the last minute, they did say that they'll probably be moving to another town probably by 4:00 to do filming in another location. So it, the 8:00, the 8:00 PM shouldn't even be an issue. But there's enough parking on site. They have off-site parking dedicated. They, they lay it all out in their backup material, so it does appear to be fine.
The difference between Universal Television is for Netflix, just how everybody, all the lines are monitoring.
Yeah.
They gotta keep their backdoor open, their machine.
Exactly, exactly.
Do neighbors get notified?
No. I mean, there's no formal notification. We didn't, we didn't see anything that would lead us to, to do that. I mean, they're, they're working, as it turns out, they're working within the hours of filming provided by the code. There's no parking on the street that would be unexpected.
No gunfire.
No explosions. We do ask these questions, so...
You said filming indoors and outdoors.
Yeah, mhm.
Resolve to approve filming permit for Universal Television LLC for filming at Villanewitz, 55 Hudson Road West, Irvington, New York, on August 1st, 2018, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM with a fee of 1,000 dollars. Make a motion if I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Continuation of Community Choice Aggregation Program.
So I thought I'd go through the entire thing.
Presentation is...
No.
Aggregation program?
Yeah. I didn't have the heart to bring it up at the work session. So the Community Choice Aggregation Program, which as you remember relates to aggregating usage by residents who have not chosen to, an alternate supplier for their energy. So it's those who have their default supplier, whoever that may be, Con Ed Solutions, whoever the default supplier is. This pools it all together, and the organization, Westchester Power, which is really Sustainable Westchester, puts out a bid for that power and achieves somewhat lower rates. The program, by the data that they presented to us, appears to have been successful over the last two years, or coming up on two years. It does expire the end of 2018, so they're preparing for the renewal. As part of, bless you, as part of the renewal process, they need to have the, the village execute another memorandum of understanding. The, that part of it, I literally just got a draft of it last week. There are several questions. In fact, they're holding meetings right now to answer some of those questions. So the MOU is, is rather incomplete. What we were told is that the MOU, it will have, will be substantially the same as the first time around. But I can't say that with certainty at this point. The, the reason it's on the agenda tonight, quite frankly, is they are going to be looking for this information by the end of August. And we don't have another meeting until August 20th, and I, I'm not going to be there, which is okay, but I thought it would be easier to, to get your agreement with continuing with this program, and then I'll work closely with the village attorney to make sure that what we sign is similar to what was in the past. If there's...
I actually did review it compared to the past one. It's very similar. There's just, there's two big things missing from this, and that's the thing they're, they're meeting on tonight. One is that the template for the ESA, I forget what the other one was, but the MOU is very similar to, it was updated from the last one, but very similar.
Right. So anyway, that's, that is what they told us, so that's good news. But we'll, we'll look at that over the next whatever weeks, but I don't think I'll get a draft of the real MOU for probably in at least another week. They were having a meeting, I think they're having a meeting Wednesday in addition to the one that they held on Thursday that I did go to, to answer some questions. So that's it.
You're coming from board, aren't you?
Any detailed questions about it? I'd be happy to answer. Any questions? This was, this was painful last time.
But the goal is to continue people who opted for this program to stay opted into the program.
Yes. Yeah, that, that wouldn't change. The people who have not chosen and, and ESCO, you know, a provider, separate provider, those who haven't would continue getting their power at the rates negotiated through this cooperative. And that's, as I said, some of the data shows it's been pretty successful, so.
And we'd still go for green?
Yeah, and actually that's part of what these meetings were about. They may not even offer the brown option. They may do either green or greener. So, you know, those are decisions I'll have to make tonight. They're still working on that. They're still working on that. So anyway, we'll see what happens.
Was that successful?
Well, we'll see. There's a lot of debate about that.
"Whereas by resolution 2015-123 and local law 2015-09, the village of Irvington established a community choice aggregation program in cooperation with Sustainable Westchester, Inc., a non-for-profit organization now comprised of over 40 municipalities in Westchester County. And whereas the program is set to expire on December 31st, 2018, whereas the village wishes to continue its participation in the program beyond the December 31st, 2018 expiration date, now therefore be it resolved to prove the memorandum of understanding with Sustainable Westchester, Inc., and any and all documents required to continue the community choice aggregation program. And authorize the village administrator to execute said documents subject to the final approval of the village attorney." I will make a motion if I get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, just when we thought we were done, we have one more quick one here, which is a, a appointment of seasonal water department personnel.
Yeah, one added person. It's, it's item 19 and a half on your table there. We're just slipping in, just missed the agenda cutoff.
"Resolved to make the following appointment. Louis Lustenberger, laborer, $13 per hour from July 10, 2018 through August 21st, 2018, as needed." I'll make a motion if I can have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
"Reports of four standing committees and officers. Trustee liaison reports. Mr. Gilliland or Gilbrandt or everybody."
I've got a, I've got AV tonight. So I just want to remind people, the Green Policy Task Force was speaking up about the fact right now we're in the summertime restrictions on leaf blowers. And the regulations for the leaf blowers can be found on the village website under, I guess it's irvingtonny.gov/leafblowers. And you can go directly there and read them for yourself, but right now, leaf blowers are highly regulated or discouraged from use, except occasionally by a homeowner and certain other conditions. But I did want to bring in, unless you have an electric leaf blower, by the way, which is not restricted. So I did bring my latest toy, which is an electric leaf blower. And, no, I'm not gonna turn on, I have to go to the door. And, you know, it's very nice. It's got, you know, rechargeable battery that actually can be used along with the weed whacker, the lawn mower, whatever. They all use the same sized battery. And although this is probably not good enough for a commercial landscaper, it's just good for a homeowner. This is, this unit with the battery is $149. I'm not selling them. I'm just telling you that they're in that price range now. But what I wanted to do was a quick little experiment, and I'm gonna engage Larry here for a moment to read the DB meter. And what we're gonna do, one thing I wanted to mention to you, I don't know why it's not going there. You should tap the screen for, I have it set for one minute to shut down. So what I'm gonna do is go over to about...
Well, you're already over there.
No, conversation is, it even says in here, the conversation is about 60 dB, normal conversation. I'm gonna go 25 feet away, which is half the test distance, and I'm gonna start it low and then I'm gonna go high, just for a second. You can signal me when you've gotten both readings.
Should we ring the microphone with you?
So they could hear this?
I'm sure it's gonna be whispered quiet.
Okay, so we say, we say, a low set. We're beginning to read it now.
You gotta stop talking. I said you have to stop talking, you're loud.
Okay, that's kind of an adjustment for a sound block. But here's, if you have a huge pile of leaves, this is full blower.
There was a 74?
Yes, no, 68 and 73. 67 to 68 and 72 to 74. Yep. Now we're at half, half the distance of a real test situation, which is 50 feet, but you could see that even the electric ones are not that quiet. You don't have to run them at full throttle, which you do, even the lowest throttle is about good. 65 to 70 dB. So that was my, aside, I do know that I didn't get any nasty looks when I was running out in my yard. And none of the neighbors came running out and said, "What are you doing?" So that's the story.
Not about the leaf blower, right?
Yeah, exactly. So that's the story about the, that's my AV for the night. Thanks a lot for your patience.
Those fun, great things to work with you.
Yeah.
Doc?
So the, the housing committee met last week for the first time in a while and, and they got an update about affordable housing issues in the village from Rose Noonan, and also had a consensus that they will be sent in a recommendation to the board, that the board consider the Broadway corridor rezoning as a priority in their comprehensive plan actions. I'd like to know that we've gotten that started and that is something that we'll be working on. The 4th of July celebration went off without any significant problems. The, the GPTF did a great job in helping and cleaning up. I think that was probably the highlight of the, the evening, which were okay. And Brad Shaw said he never had an easier time cleaning up after a 4th of July event. He was very, very pleased with the work that they did, as well as the work that's being done up at Memorial. I believe RPAC is meeting on Wednesday. Date camp continues. Teenscape, the first session is already finished, believe it or not, and to, to rave reviews. I think there was at least one letter that was sent, that was sent around.
And my son goes and he loves it.
And the second one is starting. A little temporarily.
Doc?
Well, I've, I've been in my role as liaison to downtown business and tourism. I've spent some time with historic Hudson River towns, and there's continued and more successful fundraising related to the potential very big tourist attraction, which is the Sing Sing Museum. And that effort is to focus on criminal justice reform and all kinds of things that would make it a, a very attractive site in the Hudson Valley. I've also been very involved recently with an effort related to heritage tourism, especially as to the role of Westchester County in the American Revolution. So you'll hear more about that, but I seem to be heading up that effort at the moment from the county. The theater, you know, you've heard a lot tonight about the theater's effort, and I would reiterate what Larry said and others, that the commissioners and the volunteer group that has worked on the 501(c)(3) effort and all that has been a tremendous amount of time. And, you know, you can't pay people to do all this work, but it's something they love. And if that all comes to fruition, that would be very helpful to the downtown development. I had some information from the water department, from Jim Englishby. Has to do with their usual activities of reading water meters, doing summer maintenance, painting the fire hydrants. This time their water main break was on railroadway at the entrance to Sina Hudson Park. It's a, you know, a serious problem. They were, they've been working on the valves and they've been working on the maintenance of pressure reducing valves on Station Road and Ardsley Avenue West. And if you really want to understand what that is, ask Jim or ask Ryan, who might understand. The highway department, Greg Nielsen, they've been repairing, rebuilding a catch basin on Lower Field Point Drive and replaced a 20-foot section of concrete curb. There were two large fallen trees, I suppose if you live there, you know about this, on Fargo Lane, Mountain Road. Replaced broken sections of sidewalk at two occasions on South Ecker Street. Continuing the catch basin cleaning. And they've also assisted the water department with those things that I mentioned, and they assisted the parks department. And there's been line painting and filling of levels.
So what's going on right now outside Village Hall? It looks like more than just a catch basin replacement.
Right, right. Yeah, there, there are a few things that are being done as kind of a precursor to the, to the town hall, Theater Plaza work that'll be done outside of town hall. The, but the, the primary thing is to relocate the badly collapsed catch basin that was on the corner. That'll be relocated slightly up the hill and into an area that will eventually be a bulb out, a bump out for the, for the crosswalk. So that's part of the work. The other part is to raise the curbs in front of town hall. So we're, we're retaining the granite curbs that are there, they just need to be raised.
And that's not, not our department doing that, or, right?
That's our excavation contractor, Buchi.
Contractor, yeah.
Right. I mean, they work in conjunction with some of our workers at times, but yes.
And how long do those parking spots be available?
I'm not sure how many days they have scheduled. It's probably a couple more days.
Like the end of the week.
Yeah.
Irvington Village Court, these are both the reports through June. Charges, as usual, the vast number of charges were with vehicle and traffic law. We disposed of 396 charges. Total for all categories is 414. Total money collected and remitted to the state comptroller, $48,160 in fines, $25,907 in surcharges, 1969 in civil fees, for a total of $76,036.50. Irvington Fire Department report. Training, June 5th, 2018, live fire training at Valhalla, joined by the Hastings Fire Department. Irvington Fire Department worked on our initial attack operations for a structure fire. Operations included advancing hose lines into a structure and search and rescue. June 12th, boat training on the Hudson River. The Irvington Fire Department worked on our rescue techniques that would be called upon during an incident involving a vessel on the river. Members also worked on operating Marine Four and training candidates to be operators on our fire boat. On June 19th, live fire training. The Irvington Fire Department worked on initial attack operations for a structure fire. Operations included building on our progress from two weeks prior. Line officers also worked on refreshing their skills, utilizing the thermal imaging cameras on a fire scene. June 26th, boat training. The Irvington Fire Department worked on our vessel operations, including working with candidates for new boat, new boat operators. Your feel-good report for the evening, June 14th. The Irvington Fire Department responded to an animal rescue located at the entrance of Richmond Hill. Members rescued five baby ducks caught under a storm drain leading to Station Road. The storm drain was 20 feet below the surface, which required the firefighters to cut the drain and be lowered into the drain to make the rescue. Thank you, guys. June 21st, the fire department responded to a motor vehicle accident, accident pedestrian pinned. Upon arrival, it was confirmed that the patient was not pinned under the vehicle and was transported by the Irvington VAC. Maintenance engine 177 was brought to Ruscon and a new alternator was put in due to past issues with the old. All of the department's portable radio batteries were replaced due to age. Annual maintenance to chief's vehicles was performed, including oil, oil changes and inspections. New engine 178 update. The cab is now in production and is scheduled to be mounted to the chassis near the end of August. The track committee is planning to make a trip to the KME factory to do the inspection. The truck consultant will join them there as well.
Setting a new truck.
Yeah.
Village Administrator's report.
So one minor thing and then a very important announcement. The minor thing is that there is work starting at the Mercy College pathway down to the Ardsley Station.
Yeah, we changed it.
Yeah, the, the ironic part is we still don't have our work permit for Metro North, which is, which is almost unbelievable. So they're doing what work they can. I've been told it's a matter of final review right now, a matter of days, but needless to say, I keep following up. So this was a conversation that started at least six months ago, so... The important thing is that I've been asked to be one of the judges for the cupcake decorating class down at the library. So I'll be judging cupcakes tomorrow at four o'clock if you want to stop by. I'm not eating them. I'm only judging them. So I think I'm, I'm doing it and maybe one of the police officers possibly...
Is that her?
No, I thought it was Jess, actually. Yeah. Anyway, so I'll let you know what goes.
I did that once. I didn't, I didn't know I wasn't eating them until it was too late.
No, I think they're gonna get to take them home, which...
Exactly, you're right. That's why I said I would, I would never do it again.
Obviously, you told her to call me.
Oh, no. Village Clerk Treasurers report.
Oh, let's see. We're getting ready for our annual audit that'll take place right after Labor Day. I've been striving for higher yields on our investments, so we had approved some additional banks and was able to secure a rate of just under 2%. So it means a lot to our budget to be able to bring in some additional revenues. And we're working with our software vendor for a new water building program that will be an enhancement for our residents to go online eventually. For better bill, we'll have a graph on.
Is there a date yet for that?
It'll be in the fall. We're looking at bill formats now, but it'll be definitely a graph on there. There'll be a front and a back, so, you know, information on how to sign up for direct deposit and other things.
So, you know how I am about graphs, or is this gonna be a rolling like 12, 12 months graph, or is it just gonna be...
Well, it'll be a quarterly bill, so it's going to be the prior quarters.
But for how many quarters?
Yeah. I think I'll have to find out how many...
It'd be good to be able to compare your current quarter against a year ago.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
But that way you can really see changes, but...
In there, comparing to a similar quarter.
That would be the minimum. Or the maximum.
We haven't gotten quite that far, but it goes to, it'll be an export of history. So I think we'll probably customize our history, history when they do that.
Village Jurnees report.
Thanks.
Public comment?
Review.
Review of Ashed items?
We can let the, at least the comment again.
Yeah, you wanna go turn the leaf blower on? I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
That was quick. All in favor?
Aye.